As long as you're okay.
Because that somebody's came through last night. It is weird, but it was twenty-four. You're so pretty, boy, Lord, you're pretty. Look at you, I can't believe it, you're so pretty. Guys, you ready? Oh, no, we have to wait for the attorney, is he coming?
His assistant is coming, Joe's on vacation.
So you think we should wait for five more minutes for the attorney to come? Guys, should we wait for five more minutes at least until the attorney gets here?
Yes.
I say yeah.
This is big. Sorry. Hello, I'm in the meeting, I'm in the meeting, I'm in the meeting. Okay, 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 no problem.
So did you hear from Christine?
No.
She's texting us, huh?
Yeah, I called him before coming to this.
I call this meeting to order. In accordance with the Open Public Meeting Act, Chapter 231, adequate notice of this meeting has been provided as follows. On January 20, 2023, note it was sent to the Home Tribune, Star Ledger, Union County Local Source and the Lurk of the municipality. This is a non-smoking area, and there is no smoking permitted in this building at any time. In addition to the listed items in this agenda, this Board of Education may discuss and act upon other items not specifically referred to hearing, as is allowed at a regularly scheduled monthly board meeting under the Sunshine Law. Rule court.
Ms. Thomas.
Present.
Ms. Armstead.
Present.
Ms. Carrillo.
Present.
Ms. Centron.
Present.
Mr. Dela Cruz.
Present.
Mrs. Fleming. Ms. Pino.
Present.
Mr. Rosado Casada.
Present.
And Dr. Bergham.
Present. At this moment, we will entertain comments from the public. Members of the public, members of the public desiring to make a public comment may do, may come forward at this time. For those watching online, if you wish to make a comment or ask a question, please utilize or raise your hand feet here on the online meeting platform. Please begin your comments by stating your name and address. Individuals are invited to speak on topic items at any, on one topic at any time, and no individual will speak more than once until all individuals so desiring have spoken once. The public is reminded that to ensure the efficient and orderly operation of the meeting, members of the public will be limited to speaking on agenda items for three minutes. Is there anyone, so no one desiring? Is any one online? Okay, thank you. So I guess we will move forward to our another agenda item, which is our superintendent's report. We'd like to make a motion, I would, I'd like someone to make a motion for us to go into closed session at this moment.
Motion to go into executive.
Second.
Rule court.
Ms. Thomas.
Yes.
Ms. Armstead.
Yes.
Ms. Carrillo.
Yes.
Ms. Centron.
Yes.
Mr. Dela Cruz.
Yes.
Ms. Pino.
Yes.
Ms. Rosado Casada.
Yes.
And Dr. Bergham.
Yes. We will be back shortly, thank you.
Motion to go back into regular session.
Second.
Ms. Thomas.
Yes.
Ms. Armstead.
Yes.
Ms. Carrillo.
Yes.
Ms. Centron.
Yes.
Mr. Dela Cruz.
Yes.
Ms. Pino.
Yes.
Rosado Casada.
Yes.
And Dr. Bergham.
Yes. I want to thank you, the audience, for waiting. Our next item on the agenda is our superintendent's report.
Thank you, Madam President. At Thursday's meeting, we'll have some students to bring forward to you. We had four students be selected to the Kane Scholars Program. A gentleman from Kane will be with us, we want to give him a certificate, and I think Kane is going to be bringing some Kane University swag over to give to them as well. We'll also bring forward our All-American Track Relay Team that did so well and got designation, we've asked them to come forward. Unfortunately, their varsity coach can't be here, but one of the assistant coaches could be here, and we want to celebrate them because they really did a wonderful job this year. So those will be two ceremonial things that we'll do. And then in my report, I certainly have some reflections to say goodbye. I want to tell them about the turnover that Mrs. Perkins and I have been doing, and talk about some of the accomplishments and directions that we've gone these past nine months. And that'll be my report on Thursday. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you. Our next agenda item is our education report.
Okay. So items one through five are special needs-related services. That's page three through twenty-one. Item six are amended past agenda items for the education. They're either dates that were incorrect or budget codes that needed to be adjusted. Item seven is facility and school activities. Approval to utilize for summer STEM programs, SAT testing, and next year's Fall College Night. And that's on page twenty-two and twenty-three. Item eight is to approve district staff training. And that's on page twenty-three and twenty-four. Item nine is district trips, and that's in the hands of the board members. Item ten is to congratulate the class of 2023 for earning over $3.7 million in scholarship funds. And that is from page twenty-four all the way down to thirty.
You know, guys, we really should be giving this graduating class a clap for all the scholarships that they have actually earned this year. This is really phenomenal.
Item eleven is curriculum revisions for CTE Cosmetology Program. Item twelve is creating a position out of Title II funding for early childhood reading coordinator. And that's part of a grant that we got from the state. On item thirteen through seventeen are all very similar to each other. They're all getting into an agreement with the Union County Educational Services Commission for different services pertaining to special needs requirements. Item eighteen is to approve Mind Your Mind assemblies at McManus and Soul Middle School. Number nineteen is, number nineteen through twenty-two again are very similar. They're basically district personnel that's asking for approval to be able to conduct their internship hours under the supervision of certified staff within the district. Number twenty-three is for Ms. Peltriti to be a panelist on the Union County Department of Human Services Roundtable at Kane University. Number twenty-four is re-establishing a partnership that we have with Berkeley College. They are, our juniors and seniors at Linden High School are able to take a college Intro to Justice class at no charge to the district or to the children. So it's free of charge. Number twenty-five is granting approval to submit the Twenty-First Century Application. Number twenty-six is to grant approval to submit the IDEA Annual Grant Application. Number twenty-seven is to approve the superintendent termination for harassment, intimidation, bullying, as discussed on the May 23rd, 2023 regular meeting, as listed below. Number twenty-eight is to approve ILTs, which are instructional leadership teams on data analysis. What we're going to be looking to do is to utilize data to guide instructional practice next year. And this item is going to help us be able to do that and train all of the administrators to do a better job of utilizing their data, giving them more resources and more tools. Number twenty-nine is what Dr. Tomasic mentioned, is the Kane Scholars. This is the second year the program is in existence. So we have four new students that are listed that have been admitted into this program. So we want to honor their accomplishments. And that is the end.
Thank you very much. Our next agenda item, the Personnel Committee.
Dr. Bergham.
Oh, yes, sorry, sorry.
Dr. Bergham?
Yes.
I have a quick question, that I just want to know about the date on number twenty-three. That has June 13, 2023, is that the right date?
Yes, that is the correct date, she didn't find out about it until after, it was like two days before that she was invited to participate, so that's why it's on this agenda.
Thank you.
I have a question about eighteen, approved Minding Your Mind. What exactly is that? Present, the Assembly?
Minding Your Mind at the middle school? Yeah. Yeah. It was part of mental awareness and helping students social-emotional learning.
That's nice.
Awesome, thank you.
You know what I haven't seen, oh, I could have missed it? Our tutoring, is it, is it going to be part of our educational? Do you have any? Because I know that for our students that are not performing well, what type of tutoring program we having in place to make sure these students get caught up?
Are you saying our summer programming?
Oh, oh, you're wrong tutoring. I didn't see anything included, am I missing something?
Yes, I think that the last four months, as we built the summer programs, that's what we're offering for the summer. As we go into the fall, you'll start seeing other programs that get authorized by Title I and the other title programs and our other work, that comes later as we set up for the new school year.
Okay, good, thank you. May I ask another question? Before, you know, because this is education, and it really concerns me. I know we have a very robust ESL program, but, you know, I envision that in our next school, in within the next ten years, almost every program out there would be, every job description out there would be saying bilingual preferred, not required, but preferred. And I think we have a robust ESL program where our children, you know, ESL children, students graduate speaking two languages. But what concerns me is our children who both parents speak English, that when they graduate from school, they cannot speak a second language. And we have to, I know we have, you know, we have English language learners, or we have different programs taught in our school. But, you know, I, I, I could be wrong again, but I think that we need to revisit our second language learner program. I believe every student that graduate from Linden should be proficient in a second language. So I think we have to find a way to maybe have a dominant second language, maybe SLL, Spanish language learners, or some sort of dominant language. So every child that graduate from Linden should be dominant in a second language. So we have to do that as well as put in place, just like you said before, a data tracking system. You know, you, you, you mentioned Paul about the data tracking system to track the results of our students. And I think it should be also put in place for our second language learner, not only Spanish, but the English language students. So that every student, every student from Linden should graduate proficient in a second language. What do you guys think? Any comments?
We remember you brought that up at the committee meeting, and we've been preparing a document for the board to see what we're actually doing now with world language, so you can understand exactly how the program is designed currently. And we'll also put forward the New Jersey, State of New Jersey requirements for graduation requirements. And of course, it specifies things like four years of English, four years of health and need, three years of social studies, and goes through all of those requirements. And of course, we hold those very strictly for when we get the Linden High School diploma. I just want to say, after the board gets this document and we consider further discussion on the concept that you've been talking about, if there is something that we have to do to go beyond the State of New Jersey's graduation requirements, then we will have to vote that in, because our students will be required to do it. But first and foremost, since we just got this information, we wanted to make sure that you knew everything that we were doing from pre-kindergarten up to grade twelve in the area of world language, so that you have a baseline to carry on further discussions. But if we go to the goal of every student in the Linden Public Schools leaving school proficient in a second language, that would take a lot more mandates than we currently have with the high school graduation requirements. And we'll lay all that out in committee, so that you can consider that.
I'm just asking us to revisit it, so all our students graduate, and even Keel when it comes to second language. Another topic I want to bring up, I do not know if it's in this area or if it's in the building and grounds. I really think that for the last hundred and five years, we have had our high school graduation at Tiger Stadium. I think we need to revisit that and see if whether we could move it to one of our community colleges. Because I know that maybe in the last hundred years, we may have been rained out five, ten times. But reality is, we have over four hundred students graduating, and it's very, very difficult for what happened in our last graduation. I, I just think we should just look, start looking at other options.
The graduation at the airport was a hit.
No, the graduation that we kept in this, we wanted like possibly in Keen College or Union County College, if we could possibly.
It was sad to turn parents back.
Year just begun.
Yeah.
All I'm just asking is that if we could look into other options as opposed to us having to, listen, we didn't rain, but could you imagine if we rained a lot and all the parents that were standing outside? You know, I know we streamed in and, and you know, we had an amazing graduation. But I think that we, we spent a lot of money in the jambutron, if we look at what Keen and Union County charges for us to keep the graduation there, it might be something that we could look into. Any thoughts on that, Ms. Dr. Tomasic?
Yes, I have, I know that the community will have a lot of passion about that subject. I would only recommend that we do two pieces. One, we have to check availability and how much it costs, because you can't book these facilities at the last moment, it's going to have to be booked very early. And whatever the cost is, if it's sunshining out, we still book the facility. So there's going to be a fixed cost and a location, but I suspect that many, many parents won't like having to drive elsewhere, but we could do a survey. We can ask their opinion, maybe they don't want to take the risk that there's only two seats in the gym, maybe they're willing to go elsewhere. But there are a number of places, it's a very busy time of the year for those facilities. And if it's the sense of the board that we're going to have another place to go to make sure that we're have more than two tickets for parents in a air-conditioned facility, then, then we can certainly move in that direction. The sooner we scope it out, the better it's going to be.
Any discussion on this topic, any of your thoughts, what do you guys think?
It's, it's, it's okay, like you just talked to Tom, I just been saying, we have to decide where we're going to go, how much is going to cost, and like over here, it's easy and it's convenient. Everybody can get there, so you know, driving other places, parents may have a little problem with it, but we can weigh the pros and the cons and see what's going on, see what's best for everybody to do it, you know, but, you know, Mother Nature takes a course, so it doesn't matter if we go in or out, whatever, you know, Mother Nature, you know, she rules everything, so, you know, so. If we go, we just take a vote on it and see what the parents decide, and that's it.
You guys agree with that? We should start looking into it for next year?
And I agree with what, with what Dr. Tomasic just said. So if we look at it from both sides, then we'll be able to come to a conclusion.
Okay, good. All right, so, anything else before we move on to the next agenda item? Our next agenda item is our finance. Our finance report.
Good evening, at Thursday's meeting, the recommendation of the interim Superintendent of Schools and the Business Administrator, Business Administrator Board Secretary will be for the following resolutions. Resolutions one through five are our typical monthly resolutions for our Board Secretaries and Treasurers' reports, acknowledging that no accounts have been over-expended, approving payments for salaries and payroll, approving Student Activities Report, as well as transfers and adjustments for the month of May 2023. Resolution number six is to amend past board actions, including changing a year when the work was done, that was for the fence work that we had approved at the last meeting, amending the number of copy machines that we were going out with, with Atlantic. I initially put fifty-one, it's actually fifty. And the next couple are adjustments to the amount that we had listed as the award amount for transportation. These were for, mainly for the ESY routes. The, the calculations were incorrect, because they were based on the incorrect number of days. The per diem amounts are still the same, but the calculation that was put on the agenda was incorrect. Resolutions seven through ten are to accept donations, $500 from Groundwork Elizabeth Union County Kids, $400 from Blackboard Giving Fund, $500 from Groundwork Elizabeth 4K Kids, and the acceptance, accepting Science Boss Kits from School Specialty for student and professional development use, and we, probably we estimated the value at $35,000 for that donation. Resolution eleven is approving a payment to New Jersey School Boards for membership dues for 2023-24. Resolution number twelve is for the approval for Rethink Autism, which is district site licensing of ABA curriculum training and data tracking services for 2023-24. Resolutions thirteen and fourteen are being charged to a grant. One is for occupational therapy services. The other is for Nata's Regional Medical Center for consultations with a behaviorist. Resolution number fifteen is for a proposal, accepting a proposal from Det Book. This is a new requirement for our audit, for the audit that is going to be completed for the 22-23 school year, that will be obviously done during the 23-24 school year. There's a new compliance with GAZB ninety-four. Or the ninety-six, I apologize. Resolution number seventeen is to approve web filters and students, student wellness monitoring from CDW. This is for Apple iPads that we recently authorized. Uh, this is for Apple iPads that we recently authorized purchasing for the 2324 school year. Resolution 18 is to certify that, uh, the corrective action plan that was initially adopted for the Board of Education for the 2122 school year audit, that the recommendations there have been implemented. That, you know, basically that the errors that were found in the audit during the 2122 school year have been corrected. Um, resolutions 19, 20, 21, 22, 23, 24, 25, and are basically approvals for the upcoming school year. Uh, we have an approval for Energy for America. Uh, that's to provide engineer, uh, professional engineering facilities management program for our, uh, our HVAC system. We're looking to approve MAFE security to handle the district central station monitoring and cell backup. Proving MAFEs again to handle the district's locksmith services. Proving Neutral Link to provide our application entry system for the district's food service applications. This is to allow our food service, food service applications to be done online. We're looking at approving Campbell Fire Protection, Inc. of Suffolk, New York, to provide inspection and monitoring services for our fire suppression systems. Uh, we're looking at approving the Garden State Environmental of Glen Rock, New Jersey for our asbestos management coordinator. Uh, this was based off a proposal received, uh, in June of 2023. We're also looking at having Garden State Environmental to perform our right-to-know services for the 2324 school year. Resolution 26 is for, uh, school-based mental health care services. Uh, this was an RFP that the board had previously authorized us to perform. Uh, the cost for the program for the 2324 school year will be paid for out of a S R three grant. Item number 27 is to approve, uh, Alliance Commercial Pest Control to do our integrated pest management services for the 202324 school year. Item number 28 is approving the renewal of our insurance package. Uh, this is through our New Jersey Schools Insurance Group. And it covers our workers' comp, our school leaders' errors and omissions, our package, including, uh, cyber, our student accident, um, the bonds for the superintendent BA and assistant BA, as well as the flood insurance. Items number 29 and 31 are being paid for, um, for our ELL programs and being paid for in part out of our Title III funding, um, our EDWEB for 2324 to provide professional development services to comply with New Jersey requirements as it relates to multi-language learners, as well as number 29, which is Linkit, which is a data service for ELL program. Uh, item number 30 is to approve the proposal of an installation of an auditorium screen and projector here at school one. So that next year, my budget presentations don't have to be. No, it's actually the principal requested it, but we're going to take advantage of it too. Uh, item number 32 is to, uh, perform a repair for the AC compressor at the last building, utilizing our time and material vendor. Item number 33 is to approve the purchase of a weapons detection system. Um, and this would be placed at our high school as well as at our middle schools. Items 34, 35, and 36 relate to the marquee purchases that were part of our budget presentations for 2324. Uh, we needed to include, uh, permit services that the, the vendor needed to perform, um, which is item number 34. Item number 35 is the installation of a double-sided electronic marquee at McManus Middle School to replace the single-sided marquee that we have there currently. And it, um, I want to thank Dr. Tomasic for this suggestion. He said, well, you know, let's not get rid of that sign. Why don't we move that sign to the athletic complex? Because the athletic director had asked about having a sign there himself. Item number 37 is to approve the student price list, uh, for the 202324 school year. Um, this is for our high school, elementary, and middle school pricing for lunch and breakfast, including both paid and, uh, actually the reduced breakfast is also free now for the state of New Jersey. Items 38, 39, and 40, well, 38 and 40 relate to our daycare program. We're looking at approving a child care center handbook for 2324. We're also looking at approving the rates for the district's daycare program from 2324. Item number 39 is to approve tuition payments, uh, from staff members to be enrolled in our programs for the 202324 school year. Uh, item number 41 is to approve increasing the hourly rate for our class three officers. This will also necessitate a revision to our shared service contract with the town. Items 42 and 43 are authorizing deposits into our reserve accounts. Uh, we have a very healthy deposit going in into our capital reserve, uh, due in part to some money that was not spent during the 2223 school year. Uh, we're also putting money into our maintenance reserve, uh, that could be utilized in future budget years for any maintenance, uh, repairs that would need to be done. Item number 44 is a technology purchases, um, one-on-one management, ID service contracts, and web content filter. Item number 45, uh, this is a law that came out from the state of New Jersey that every year in the month of June, uh, we're to, uh, notify the board as well as the public of contracts that we anticipate entering into during the course of the 2324 school year. Uh, this is why you'll see it's on several pages because we obviously have a lot of contracts. Um, we are a big district. Um, these are all the contracts that we know about right now. Obviously, as we go through the course of the year, there might be other ones that get added to this list. Yes. So I'm going to skip over to page 67 and, um, you know, next couple sets of, of resolutions are what we, you know, tend to call reorg or organizational type resolutions. And these are resolutions that are done each year to authorize us for the upcoming school year. They tend to be repeated every single school year. You know, 46, we're authorizing, uh, the use of state contract vendors for the 2324 school year. Um, we are authorizing, uh, the participation in the New Jersey Inter-Scholastic Athletic Association for 2324. That's for our sports program. Uh, we're author, we're approving, uh, that the district utilizes the chart of accounts as published in the uniform minimum chart of accounts. Those are all the account codes that you'll see as part of the budget. Uh, 49 is approving our tax shelter, annuity, investment companies, security, and voluntary insurance companies that are authorized for payroll deduction. So the one that everyone knows about is Aflac. You know, uh, employers are able to take a part of their paycheck and have, uh, it be utilized to pay for Aflac insurance. Um, you're also able to invest it in 403B type investments, which is similar to a 401K in the private sector. Item number 50 is authorizing, uh, the business administrator to pay the employee shares of social security, health benefits, and dental, and dental benefits when they are due prior to Board of Education approval. Obviously, there's some payrolls that are run prior to Board of Education meetings. Uh, we want to make sure that we're authorized to make the payments for social security, health benefits, and dental, so that those do not fall, uh, behind and, and we're fined for those. Uh, this is also looking to authorize for the direct prepayment of claims for payroll, fixed charges, and any other claims, which would be in the best interest, interest of the board to pay promptly. Uh, for instance, paying the district's taxes or, or taxes that are due for things like, uh, the bike or, you know, the payments to the IRS. Uh, if those aren't made in a timely manner, you will get fined from the IRS. Uh, item number 52 is to authorize the BA to request state and federal funds. That's, uh, the state of New Jersey has it now that, uh, we are not immediately distributed the funds. We have to outlay the money and then make the request from the state of New Jersey. Item 53 is approving the participation in various purchasing cooperatives. Um, we have 16 listed here. Uh, these are cooperatives are basically, um, outside organizations that have done the bidding for us. They've gone out, they've, um, put together an RFP or a bid for services. And we're able to piggyback off of those bids, uh, and purchase the items through these cooperatives. Um, item number 54 is, uh, to allow us to, uh, enter in through a purchasing co-op to make purchases through Amazon. Um, you know, this isn't something that we would do on a regular basis, but I know especially for technology, there are some items that are very hard to come by, um, and you can find it more easily on Amazon. So it would be, you know, the purchasing would just come through our offices, but it wouldn't be for all items. It would just, like I said, be for specialty type items. Item 55, or rather, resolution 55 is for the disposal of obsolete surplus equipment. Item 56 is our time and material, uh, vendors. We had, uh, received, we actually mailed out three quotes, only received one in regards to piano tuning as well as music instrument repair, uh, for the 2324 school year. Um, item, uh, the last one is athletic supplies, um, for the fall sports. That was done through our Ed Data bidding. Um, and as you can see there, we received, um, five bids in regards to it. Item 57, um, which we had talked about in executive session, is for insurance archaeology services. I, I tend to call this a cost mitigation service while we're spending $9,500. Um, it is to, uh, provide us with insurance coverage for, or rather, notes as to what insurance coverage we had in, you know, for the 1970s and 1980s. Should there be claims against the district, um, from those time periods? Um, item number 58 is for a vape detector system, um, as part of our finance committee. We actually had that presented to us, uh, and it, it's something that we'd be looking to install in the bathrooms at the high school. Um, it would be able to detect vaping, um, as well as, it actually has a lot of other great qualities. It was able to detect, um, certain words that were said so that if it was, uh, a kid was saying something, um, that might have been threatening, uh, it would be notifying. And, and it can be set up so that it's notifying, uh, specific individuals. Um, but we, again, we're looking at having this installed within the, uh, the bathrooms at the high school. Items 59 and 60 relate to, again, the budget presentations, uh, and the installation of backboards at school five and school nine. Um, item 61, we will have the information in here. Um, we actually had, the bid opening was on Friday. Uh, we received two bids. Uh, they were being reviewed by our, um, attorney. He had actually sent me a notification as to his recommendation. Um, because obviously on the bids, we had to make sure that all the documentation is in order before we can award it. Uh, and he had sent me a notification, um, he couldn't make it onto this agenda because I received it around five o'clock today, uh, but we will have it on for Thursday. Item 62 is a donation that came in late, uh, that we wanted to get on, accepting 450 bags of children's books, um, for every school four student from the Alpha Kappa Alpha Sorority. And finally, item number 63 is to approve the quote for aid services for our E S Y L M E D, uh, route. Uh, we just began the route this week. Uh, it was determined that we, uh, there's a lot of students on that bus. We really wanted to get an aide on that bus. We, uh, looked at it, looked for it internally. We weren't able to find an aide that was willing to ride the bus. Uh, so we reached out to George Dapper and they indicated that they could provide an aide starting next week on July 3rd. Uh, we wanted to get that on the agenda, um, so that's why it, it had to be walked on. But that's it, uh, in regards to finance.
We had a lot, a lot of, of great topics here. I hope you guys have some items you'd like to discuss before we move to the next agenda item.
Yes, um, number 20 on page 60. So including the panic alarms, is that for, uh, every teacher, every, every classroom would have that or? Or is it just the front office?
What, the central station monitoring?
Yeah, the panic alarm.
Oh, panic buttons? Um, I believe they're just, uh, I think they are in the main offices. I'm not sure where else they are. But this would also be monitoring, you know, it includes the panic alarms, but it also includes the district alarms. So basically that, you know, it's, if an alarm is set off, it would, you know, it would go to them to let us, you know, and it would obviously go to the police department as well. Um, but it's also so that, you know, they do the testing of the alarms as well, um, you know, checking the cell backup, things like that. But they do also receive those phone calls.
Okay, thank you. What about 26 on page 61?
Yes.
The, it's, so it's, it's a grant, you're saying?
Yeah, as part of the S R three grant, one of the things that, um, and I think we can all kind of, um, acknowledge this was that, uh, the students that came back, you know, we, we wanted to make sure, or the state and, and the federal government wanted to make sure we provided mental services, mental services for the, those students. So there was money that was set aside within the S R three grant for mental health care. The district is going to, you know, had put out an RFP, uh, to have those services contracted out. And we're going to be going with Rutgers Health University, um, for those services. I think it's, they're going to be providing, I believe, three, um, mental health, uh, caregivers, so to speak.
Okay, thank you. And then number 33, page 62?
Yes.
Um, the weapons detection system?
Yes.
What is that?
Uh, we briefed that in committee. Basically, uh, this company has a very simplified weapons detection system that we could allow for a high throughput of students. As you know, the problem with, um, a classic metal detector, especially at the high school with students crossing back and forth, there would always be a backup as they ran their bags through the conveyor belt. Uh, this is newer technology. It's widely used at sporting events and concerts. Uh, two towers powered by batteries sit no more than 40 inches apart. The students have to, uh, walk through. And if the, um, tower is alert, they're diverted over to an area where they, uh, would have a further search with wands. The, um, we will have to do, um, a special adjustment at the high school. Instead, we also have these going in at the, the both middle schools. So the net effect is for the cost of these items, we would be reasonably certain that there were no knives and guns in the school. And we would be able to detect that in a way that did not significantly slow down the, um, going into school. The iPad, which all the middle school students have, will not light off the system. However, the Apple Airs that the high school students have, the metal hinge in that computer will light off the system. It has the same electronic signature as a small knife. So we, um, already are making plans of what's called a pass around. The students will have to know that before they approach entering school, their Apple Air has to be in their hands. And as they approach the towers, they put it on a table. And as they go through the towers, they pick it up and proceed. Unless they, um, the system lights off, it can go, uh, to a secondary screening station. Uh, the other advantage of the towers is they're very portable. Uh, one person could move them to a sporting event like a basketball game or a football game. So even though we have, we're planning on having, uh, five units, two at the main high school, one at the academy, and one each at Saula McManus. So we would have five units that we could set up at, uh, football games in the evening and then reposition them back to the high school, um, in the morning. So we feel this is the product, uh, that we've been looking for to, um, assure ourselves that, uh, dangerous weapons are not in the schools. And together with the And together with the Halo vape detection system, which also has other capabilities we wouldn't necessarily put out in public, but will have a severe deterrence effect on anybody that wants to bring in a weapon into our secondary schools.
Bravo, I'm very happy about that. And also thirty-four, thirty-five and fifty-eight, I'm happy to see that as well on the agenda. Thank you both, and thank you, John.
Hey, Sam, this is you, you know. This is your hard work that brought us to this point, you know, all your pushing and pushing. This is where we landed. This board really want to thank you for your commitment to making sure students are safe. You have always, for the whole year, keep talking about it.
Thank you, but I just want to know one thing for the high school with, you say we're going to have five of them. I know in the high school they have a couple of entrances in the early morning at least. I don't know about the rest of the day, but I don't know the exact street. You have one at the St. George, which is the front of the house. And then you have the one, if you're facing the front on the left-hand side. So you're going to have units there and you're going to have units in the main entrance?
There will, there will be two doors designated to enter the main high school and one door designated to enter the academy.
You got it. Anyone have any more questions regarding what's going on?
Oh, I did have another question. Wait, with the vape and they said they could. So if they're talking anything threatening, is just the threatening portion that it will pick up certain words?
We can program it to say what words we want it to detect.
Okay.
So obviously we'd be a little bit more sophisticated if we said the word help, the thing would, if anybody puts help in a sentence, it's going to be lighting off all the time. But it does have the capability that if we, if we program it to hear a phrase or something like that, it would alert, and not only would it alert in the space, but it would send a signal to the cell phones of all the security staff and a central monitoring station in the high school.
Perfect. Any more questions?
I also have a question in regards to the vape detector. Have we tested it or as, are we going off of a recommendation?
Well, we, no, we, you'll remember Jennifer wasn't ready to pass that on to the agenda till she saw it work. The gentleman brought his little display case with the machine, and I'll call it a machine because it's more than just a single detector, put the vape under and it started talking to us. Fact is, they didn't even like the CO2 level in the administration conference room. That's how sensitive it was. It also has the ability to discern the difference between vape smoke and THC smoke and cigarette smoke and other smoke. Has the ability to detect gunshots. So there are significant capabilities with the device. It's not just a single purpose. And all of that information that's detected locally, it gets communicated. And if somebody's trying to tamper with it, it'll tell that somebody's trying to tamper it. So obviously if somebody's in the hall and they get a THC alert from bathroom X, then the people's ability to respond to this is immensely increased compared to somebody smelling something and calling the office. And by the time anybody gets there, the trail is cold. So it should be, these are widely used in schools. And we believe that this will be, not only help us enforce things, but it'll be a deterrent if they know that this thing's going to light off anytime they try something.
I agree, thank you.
Any more questions? To the general public, I want you to know the parents and students, this board is listening to you. We're going to move to the next agenda item, which is our
Buildings and Grounds.
Buildings and Grounds.
Good evening. On Thursday's meeting, we, the Building and Ground and Security Committee, upon the recommendation of the interim superintendent of schools and the business administrator for secretary, will be presenting the following four resolutions. They are all use of facilities, one for the Linden Recreation Track and Field as requested by the mayor Derek Armstead. Request by the Linden Tigers, Pop Warner for cheerleading practices at school four and five, as well as home football games at Tiger Stadium. A retroactive approval of use of facilities at no charge for the Linden Police Department. This is for them to utilize our parking lot at the Academy of Excellence. And that's for parking for the city hall employees. And finally, a use of facilities, and this one just came on as requested by our mayor Derek Armstead for the summer Linden Recreation Basketball Program to be held at the Linden High School Gym.
Any, any discussion before we move to the next agenda item? Our next agenda item is planning and policy report.
Yes, I'll take that. There's two policies that we are putting forward. The first is a modification to the search and seizure. The policy that we've had in place that allows for random drug, I'm sorry, random search for weapons stays as stands. But we thought it would be better since we're bringing on these weapons detection systems to make sure that the use of them is thoroughly memorialized in policy. So this adds one paragraph to the existing policy. It will go on first reading, second reading next month. And by the time we start in the fall, the policy to justify what we're doing with the detections for weapons on a daily basis will be in force. The second reading of policy, student representative of the Board of Education. This will make this in force. We would expect that in the fall, the student council will elect a member to be on this body. And per the guidelines in the policy, we'll have a student representative at the Board of Education meetings sitting here at the dais with us, representing the student voice of the students. That's planning and policy.
Any discussion? Our next agenda item is comments from the public. Members of the public desiring to make a public comment may come forward at this time. For those watching online, if you wish to make a comment or ask a question, please utilize the raise your hand feature on the online meeting platform. Please begin your comments by stating your name and address. Individuals are invited to speak on one topic at a time. No individual will speak more than once until all individuals so desiring have spoken once. The public is reminded that to ensure the efficient and orderly operations of the meeting, members of the public will be limited to speaking on agenda items for three minutes.
I was going to wait until third graduation. I was there to serve. Being online and waiting here in Hell House. But you're, you know, I think we look to, you know, hang in the place. So glad that was brought up and hopefully someplace can be looked. Also during graduation, another thing, you have parents coming up to try and get their picture. So they're blocking. So again, that's a, you know, hopefully if it's in another facility where they have to sit in their seats, they can't block the bed for the man who was sitting on the bottom row waiting for his daughter to get ready to walk up. And a lady standing there, he asked her to move and she pushed him out. I don't know what to do about that, or that's, you know, that was very frustrating. There were students using the restroom and they were trying to come back. The parents were blocking the way. And I was trying to tell them, please let them through. They wouldn't do it. Sure they through. Down, go get you the phone, you know. So that's a little frustrating to see in that. Other thing about the detectors, when you're at, sitting here thinking how the laptops will go off. If it's raining, snowing, and we want them to hold their laptops out before they go into, you know, on one table, now they're going to get wet. Students are going to get wet waiting to get in. So I have a student, I've seen across the street, so, so we tried to get into these three doors. Think about, you know, so, but I mean, having the detectors, I think it's great. You know, many times without
Thank you. Thank you very much. No one else? Is there anyone online? Okay. So we would move to the next agenda item, new and unfinished business. Do anything in your minds that you think we should be bringing up now on new school year's beginning?
Just in terms of the graduation thing, I did realize that it was an issue with the parents standing there and blocking the way. And I think a lot of them were trying to get that candid moment of seeing their child receive their diploma. What do we think about floating the idea of having maybe a photographer there that would capture that moment of them receiving their diploma and having it uploaded somewhere where parents are able to access it so that that eliminates them having to try to stand there in crowds of space to get that picture?
I've seen that used very effectively. But interestingly, it didn't stop the attempt to get that camera. I mean, they enjoyed the camera and it was professionally done. And the camera was set up so that the handshake award was, the photographer was well placed. But there's a, we have a culture of getting that moment on your iPhone too. And that's, it's, that one's a tough one to break. I think the answer to that obviously was a little bit more aggravated because we're inside the gym. That generally isn't a problem when we're on the football field because there's a fence holding the parents back. And so we have a, it's never been an issue. Although I have heard that outdoors, that there are people on the fence and they're blocking people who can't see. And we, generally the police that we bring to the facility have to make sure that people keep moving so that people who are hanging at the fence don't block the low sitting people.
Any other comment?
Yes, with the calendar, I appreciate it so much, John. Thank you very much. But the calendar that I was referring to was all the activities that we had out this summer. I mean, we started the school with so much activities that we had. We was bombarded with so much. So we have a calendar specifically stating the things that we have. Like we had graduation one day, we had this, we all had to scramble to see where we was going to go. If we were just even out and saying, it's on the calendar, we could pick where we're going to go, where we're going to go because we was bombarded with all of it.
Let me check with Ms. Perkins. We have that calendar, right? Maybe we just haven't publicized it to the board. Could you speak, we've been, we picked up on that earlier. There were a lot of collisions on use of facility because we had no one place that all the, and I believe that we had solved that. Could you speak on that calendar?
Yes, it is on our website. So when you click on it, the calendar does appear and it's our district calendar. And there's also a link that you can sort of show everything that's going on. And then you can drill it down by school. So you can click and see if you want to just spend time at
Because it was a lot, we was all over the place. And, you know, with the matters and the soul school and this one and that, when we all had to scramble around. So we would want to go, but we had it simple, okay, so we're just checking and get it. But thank you, we appreciate it.
Yeah, but you made a great, you, you made a good recommendation. Because it's nine of us and there's so many events, we need to look at the calendar and we need to pick the events we would like to attend so that we always have representation. Because sometimes we all are at the same event and there's another event going on that no one is there. So I think that we really need to coordinate and get involved. And we should always try to be, some board, one board member should be at every event. So if that's your baby, you make it work for us, okay?
I, I know it's on the website, but can we have a board update weekly on the events? So a monthly calendar? I think that would be more helpful than us going to the site and just selecting the calendar. That's just my thought.
Good.
Yeah.
We'll take it for action.
Okay.
All right. Appreciate it.
Our last agenda item is board member comment. Any board member have any comments tonight?
Yes, I, I know we spoke about before about the cooking and mechanics and the fashion, the beauty, the cosmetology programs. I was just wondering as far as like that coming back into place and hopefully the students would be able to take advantage of those programs. Also with homework, I know some parents that struggle as far as like the new learning ways that let's say we learned a certain way when we were learning. And then now students are learning a different way. So maybe they could have like some type of like, I would say like a parent support program. Because I know I struggle myself at times with homework with my, with my kids. And as far as the, the mind in your mind, the social emotional assemblies, I would like to see more of that as well. That's it.
What was your question on the cosmetology?
To see how that could come, come back into the high school, so it could be available for the students. Because I know like the mechanics, the cooking, the cosmetology, the fashion, especially fashion, the kids, the students really like that.
Yes, we, we had a staff meeting and we've been developing a revised CTE vocational plan. And it's pretty sophisticated. We have it in three phases right now. Why don't I let Mr. Olivero speak to that? Just, we can get you the, the actual plan, but we've got it divided in how it relates to getting money and restarting things. Dr. Mr. Olivero, please handle that.
Yes, so Mr. Scaldino and I have been meeting for the last six months kind of looking at everything that the district currently has. So what we found is since the last time that Dr. Tomasic was here, was the last time that CTE Perkins information was actually being submitted to receive funds. So this year, we're finally submitting for the first time data to the state, which should be able to give us some funding for a cosmetology program. That being said, we're also this summer going to be working on all the CTE programs have an application that have to be submitted. So, you know, the video, the visual videography, we're going to be submitting one. Graphic design. Computer science and engineering are the five plus the cosmetology. We also have to update that. That's why that was on the agenda for education. So those five programs, we're going to be submitting to kind of revitalize them the right way. And then moving forward, year two of the phase, which would be twenty-four, twenty-five school year, we're looking to add some additional courses, maybe public safety. Because I know that was brought up, homeland security tying something in. So we're looking at maybe seeing the pulse of students. Are they interested in law enforcement, public safety, and creating maybe two pathways where they can become paralegals or they can go work and be interns in the police department? So those are some of the programs that we're looking at expanding. Then the third phase of the plan will be our middle schools where they establish programs that are feeding into the where they establish programs that are feeding into the high school. So we're going to try to develop a plan to compete with union vocational.
Yes.
Where our students don't have to leave. We're actually providing similar programs or even better programs than what they're providing in order to keep that attraction. We're also going to develop a plan where the high school students are going to mentor the middle school students and they're going to collaborate on projects. So it's going to be a multi-year phase plan that's going to encompass. And eventually, phase four will be tying the elementaries into the middle schools. So it'll be like a big pyramid that all ties in.
Wow. Thank you. The last thing that I would like to discuss today, tell you, we have a lot going on. But the last thing I would like to discuss with you today is that like our superintendent, to share our vision for our night program.
Yes, the, the core of the evening program was to take the Academy of Excellence program that was run during the day. And these are students who are not succeeding in the traditional school setting. And as we look down the line, of course, paying $600,000 a year for rent for the St. Elizabeth facility, as we start to try to become more efficient and more in line with what we should be spending, that kind of, looking at that is a, is a big target. So the first step that we did to depopulate ourselves from needing that space was to move the alternative school back to Linden High School to run in the evening the way it was run before we moved to St. Elizabeth. And so this allows us in a non-traditional setting to have students who, because of attendance problems or other issues, can get their schoolwork done after school hours until seven or 7:30 in the evening. That alone is good, but there's a corollary advantage to doing that model is because we will have teachers and an administrator in the Linden High School through the evening hours. We also are able to accept other entities, colleges, whomever, to run adult school programs. Programs that come immediately to mind that we've worked in the past, our GRE programs, teaching adults to speak English, could be cooking programs. There's various federal money available to colleges to deliver programs in the community. But if they don't have a facility that they can use, then they, then it becomes a problem. By us running the alternative school program during the weekdays at Linden High School in the evening, there's the ability to draft in other adult programs at Linden High School as the opportunities come up.
Yes. Any questions on all the great things that we're looking forward to be doing in our next school year? Any more questions before we close?
Well, I do, I do have two more questions. What are we going to do with the building that we're paying the $600,000?
Gone.
Well, we're still using it in the sense that the, we have a lot of office spaces over there. We have the child study team over there and there are still students over in St. Elizabeth in the top program, which is of a certain size. So it's justified. It's not wasting money. We just, there's three floors. We took out a floor. So over the next two years, which is what our lease is, we're going to be set up. There's various options that this board has before it to do things. There, I'm just going to run through three, just to throw them out. You have the option on this space, it's right next to Linden Academy, to build classrooms right there on that open field. It won't be the freshman academy where you had a gym and a cafeteria and all of that. But you do have the space and you have the need and you have the money to just build out eight classes, 12 classes, whatever it needs to be that could handle all of that top, top program and do it right here. As you saw, we put 20 million into capital reserve. And you, this is money that you had already saved for the freshman academy. So the money's there, the space is there, the need is there, we own the land. It shouldn't be that hard to find the classroom space for the top program. And then even if, even if we had, still didn't have enough space for the offices because we have coaches there, we have the pre-K program is centered in St. Elizabeth. We have the early childhood program. If alls we need is offices, we have two options. We could either move the science kits to a warehouse type facility, of which there's many, many around Linden. When, before we went to St. Elizabeth, the science kits, we were paying a minor amount of money for one of the stores along St. George's. And so when we had St. Elizabeth and the child study team moved out, this, we closed that down and the science kits went to the sunny side, which we own. So you could, if you have a warehouse, you could move the science kits to a warehouse. And then all of that office space opens up and you wouldn't even need the office space. And you save 600,000. And even if you had to rent the warehouse, it's no way that it's going to be 600,000. It might be 50 or something like that. So we have the ability to reabsorb all of the people who are at St. Elizabeth and forego that $600,000. You just need some planning and, and we could, we should be able to pull it off. And in the end, we would have extra class space, office space, and we'd be living with it our means.
And question two was, what Ms. Centron said was about something in general for the parents, especially new coming parents to the younger kids. Because when I came in with my daughter, when she went to school, this common core math, she come to me and says, Daddy, two plus one. I know how to do two plus one is three, but she told me, no, you're wrong on the way you're getting the answer. And they threw it all off with that common core. I know, thank God, we don't do the common core math anymore, but it's true. If, we were taught differently and now we're teaching our kids differently. If the parents don't know, we're getting the same answer, but the kids are saying, no, you're wrong. It makes us look like, well. I think there should be something in the beginning of the year and not even in the middle because they told us about common core, common core in January and school started in September. So something in the beginning of the year, the first month, at least say, look, parents, you want to come here? This is what we're teaching your kids. So you at least know the basic grasp instead of me going out to YouTube and look like, oh, wait, let me see what you're doing so that I catch up with you.
I agree. Maybe like parent teacher night at least, maybe just explain this is the way we teach it versus the long way, let's say, how we would talk when we were younger. I, I agree because we are getting the same answer, but it's just the cow, the concept of how they're learning. I myself, I'm one of the parents that don't know, so.
Maybe we could do it in night school. Maybe we could have a class in night school where we could teach your parents. This is why we open up night school. This is why we open up for other vendors or other people to come in and have classes. So we took, so we could do a lot of bridging.
I think the, of course, we're hearing this tonight. We haven't had deep conversations on it. However, this need that you articulate is not unique. And I've seen it very successfully handled, paid for by Title I called Family Nights, where the parents and the kids come together, there's activities for the kids. And then the parents have, as you point out, they have sessions for the parents. The kids are all learning together, the parents are going to school with them. But the parents are actually pulled off and given that type of information. So I think that we have the means to do that without even tapping into the local funds that that should be able to be paid for by Title I. As the schools do their annual plans of what they do with that extra money, this is a made to order activity for that type of supplemental material.
In addition to the family night, I think we should also have something that would, that can be virtual for parents who couldn't attend in person. So maybe some type of webinar or recording of those things.
Yes. You guys are awesome. I'm telling you, you guys are awesome, awesome group of people. I'm so honored to work with you. I'm so excited. The guys are great. Anyway, I think it's time for us to end the meeting, right?
Absolutely.
So I would like to make, Sam, I'm doing it right this time? So I'd like to make a motion for us to end the meeting.
Motion for end the meeting. Second.
Rule call.
Ms. Thomas.
Yes.
Ms. Armstead.
Yes.
Ms. Carrillo.
Yes.
Ms. Centron.
Yes.
Tadella Cruz.
Yes.
Ms. Pino.
Yes.
Ms. Rosada Casada.
Yes.
And Dr. Bergham.
Yes.
Meeting adjourned.
Meeting adjourned, absolutely.